Okay, we are recording, so you may begin the proceedings.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Sorry, we're a few minutes late here. Our closed executive session ran a little long. But I'll call the meeting to order. This is the June 23, 2020, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. It's a special meeting because it's being conducted remotely and on a different time. First item on our agenda is the Bills and Communications. It's 479 Westway Road. It's a discussion of a request to modify a stipulated judgment. Mr. Went, do you want to introduce that with a few words, or shall I just?
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. So as members of the public may also be aware, we noticed a closed executive session to take place just prior to this public meeting, at which the commission with the town attorney present discussed the proposal made by the developer of his property. No votes were taken, no decisions were made. It was the sense of the commission to provide direction to Mr. Went, Planner, and the town attorney to engage with the developer on the proposal to acquire additional information and to come back to the commission. And I think that's all that we have on that item, unless, Mr. Went, you think something more needs to be added.
No, it's something that the commission is not taking a vote on the proposal before you, and we're going to go back and discuss that with the developer.
Correct. Very good. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Old Business. It's 78 Unqua Place, zoning compliance application of Fairfield Station Laws LLC pertaining to a 26-unit residential building pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes in the Center Design District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this subject parcel is 3 acres in size and is located at the terminus of Unqua Place. The site is bounded on the south by Medical Office Building and on the north by Metro North Railroad. 26-unit residential building is proposed. The building is four occupied stories elevated above ground level parking. The building is 63 feet in height to the rooftop amenity deck. The 26 units are comprised of 12 one-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units, and three, I'm sorry, six three-bedroom units. Parking proposed consists of 26 spaces below the building and one space between the building and the street to serve as a delivery vehicle slash loading space for a total of 27 spaces. Pursuant to the requirements of Section 8-30G of the statutes, eight of the units will be deemed restricted as below-market rate units comprised of four one-bedroom units, two two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. Recommendations were made by Mark Barnhart for some minor modifications to the affordability plan, including identifying the administrative entity, if possible, for the administration of those units. A separate document was submitted outlining the affordable unit dispersal, however, it needs to be made part of the affordability plan. The standards for review of affordable housing application are familiar to this commission, and they differ from a typical zoning application. For a denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove, based on evidence in the record compiled before the commission, that the decision from which an appeal is taken and the reasons cited for such decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record, that the commission shall also have the burden to prove that (a) the decision is necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters which the commission may legally consider; (b) such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing; and (c) such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. Court cases have indicated that the record must establish more than a mere possibility of harm to a substantial public interest. The record must contain evidence as to a quantifiable probability that a specific harmful result if the application is granted. Mere concerns alone do not amount to sufficient evidence to support the denial of affordable housing application. The chief concern was articulated during the review of the application and during the public hearing is the provision for adequate parking. Concerns were raised regarding the potential for off-site impacts due to provision of 27 parking spaces for 26 units comprised of 46 bedrooms. We do have a report from the engineering department that the drainage satisfies their concerns for the site. The police department code review comments. Let me see, I'm sorry. I was just muting some background noise. The chief, let's see, the police department code review comments were centered on the concerns for lack of parking, as we just discussed, and the lack of ability for a delivery vehicle to access the site due to the low clearance of the parking area. The site plan was modified subsequent to that to provide that loading space. So now that has been addressed, however, again, the general concern for parking still remains. The applicant submitted a letter from the co-consultant concluding that the proposal meets state building and fire codes. A follow-up review by the fire department concludes that they are satisfied with the plan. They would prefer, however, in order to improve ladder access to the building, the fire department is requesting a condition that the applicant seek approval to relocate underground the existing utility lines that run in front of this building at the applicant's expense. The applicant is willing to undertake that. But it's important to note that the fire department's code review is not contingent on that in the utilities being relocated. So we can join them in their request to do so, but we can't require the utility company to actually make that relocation. So, potential conditions that were discussed during the hearing and just now for the commission to consider, should you consider approving this project, is firstly, a revised affordability plan be submitted to identify the responsible administrative entity and identify the initial affordable unit dispersal that they did identify as that separate document. Two, a final landscaping plan should be required to indicate the landscaping along the north side of the property of potential street trees. There was also discussion about providing a construction fence to protect the neighboring medical office building fence with plastic sheeting to a height of eight feet for dust protection. And lastly, the applicant should seek approval to relocate the underground existing utility line along the front of the site to improve fire department ladder access. That's all I have for the moment, Mr. Chairman. If you give me one second, I just need to, there's a gentleman from Fair TV at my door. I just need to respond, so I'll be right back.
Yep, please do. Thank you. Emily, while Mr. Went is away, so I do see that participants, we have members in the, we have people in the WebEx meeting that are not the commissioners, right? So I see Mr. Fallon is one of the, and Mr. Reber. So, members of the public appear in the participant list, but not video. They don't, their video does not appear before us. Is that how this is working?
That's their option, so they can either show themselves or not show themselves.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm sorry.
And they, you control their mute and not mute?
Actually, Jim does that as the host.
Okay.
So he, I think he, generally when somebody comes in, he kind of forcefully mutes them, and then he will unmute when each public hearing item, when we get to our public hearing item, to see whether anybody wants to speak to that matter. But till that time, everybody's forcibly muted except for the commission members, because he chose to unmute all of you so that you can participate in the discussion for the items under executive session. And then when it gets to the public hearing, you know, all the members of the public will still be muted until, Chair, you open it up for people to speak if they feel they want to.
Right. Okay.
All right, I'm going to, give me a second. I had muted some of the commissioners during, while I was talking there. Let me unmute all of them. I think, I think all the commissioners are unmuted at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So, Mr. Went, in the end of your summary, you made reference to those various issues, but I don't think explicitly called them, or the recommendation was for those to be conditions of approval. Is it, is it the recommendation that all of those things that you reviewed at the end there be conditions of approval?
Yes. Should, should there be a motion to approve, I would recommend that those four items be included as conditions. Yes.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Noonan?
I would move to approve the application with conditions, stated by staff.
Very good. So a motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan. I hear a second.
I move to second.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Very good. Commissioner Noonan, you want to start?
Sure. I, in reviewing, in reviewing my notes on this matter and the project in general, I did not see a sufficient reason to deny, based on the standards required by 830G. Seemed to be in a decent location. Maybe not the perfect application, but certainly not, didn't meet any of the standards needed to deny the application. The conditions stated are helpful towards the application as well, and I would approve it.
Very good. Commissioner Corcoran?
I agree. I particularly, I think this is a great location for this, and I'm particularly pleased that there are six three-bedroom apartments. They seem to be kind of rare. The main issue seems to be the parking, and I don't think that we can disprove, disapprove this based on that. I think it'd be a welcome addition.
Okay, very good. Any other members of the commission have any comments? Yes, Commissioner Berman?
I concur with what's been said. I did not see any reason in the record to deny this 8-30G application. I do have concerns with the location and the tightness of the parking, given the, you know, the traffic that goes through the train station and the limited amount of parking that's being provided here. And I note that fire and police departments and other departments did express similar types of concerns, but those concerns do not rise to the level of something that would permit us to deny this on the basis of the look. And I believe that, you know, the design and the location and the accessibility to transit does have much to recommend it, and is consistent with the transit-oriented development.
Excellent. Very good. Anyone else?
I have a comment. Can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner Braun?
I feel that the burden is on the applicant to provide information, especially when the code review raised six or seven points of serious safety by both fire and police, and I don't feel they were addressed adequately at the hearing. And we also have not really heard in detail from the police or emailed from the fire department, but they're actually saying that they don't think there's adequate ladder access unless they can move the utility lines, which might not be possible. So I'm inclined to say I would vote deny this, subject to receiving adequate from police and fire about every detail that's in the code review that was done a few months earlier. I think we should, as a practice, ask for a report. This is a very cramped area.
Yep.
Public parking space is right nearby for commuters. I see that as being filled by overflow for the, from this development, creating a traffic and parking nightmare in that area. There's one space for loading and unloading of anybody moving into the building or any delivery. I don't see that as being adequate either. And then I'm still concerned about the height. I'm not sure what can go under there. Fire trucks cannot fit under the building, I guess, but the only way they can get access is moving utility lines, which might not be possible. So if we had to approve it at all, I would certainly want it contingent on getting those utility lines moved, which, you know, we have no control over the utility. Underwhelmed with the information we've been provided for traffic, for safety. So I would vote no, based on the information we have, perhaps without prejudice to be submitting with better information.
Mr. Went, can you describe for the commission the position of the fire department?
Yes.
To the power lines?
Yeah, the fire department, the chief's email was clear, because I, you know, he made the request to relocate the power lines. I followed up clarifying the position, and he responded that their approval of the plan is not contingent on the relocation of those lines. So it's the chief's position that it meets the code. They would like to have the power lines relocated because it would help their ladder access, but their approval, and I'll quote his emails, are, of the plan is not contingent on that relocation.
And it's one of the conditions of approval, now part of Mr. Noonan's motion, that we recommend to the fire department, to, to the utilities, to bury the lines and the fire, and we're going to ask the fire department to write to the utility as well, right?
Yes, we will, we will join. The applicant has to seek that approval to relocate, and we will certainly join that effort with a letter from, from, from this commission and from the fire department, supporting that relocation effort.
Right. And what about police? I mean, Commissioner Braun, to your point, we do ask for review by fire, police, and other agencies, and that's part of the, that code review process. But in the, in the final analysis, fire and police do provide their review of the plans to us. That was, that was fire.
Yeah, I did, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a follow-up conversation with Gary Wickman, the officer who attended the code meeting, and just clarifying, there aren't any, you know, there aren't any emergency vehicles, or the fire department would not drive under the building. They don't have the clearance to do so. The loading space that's been provided in the front of the building, the building footprint has been relocated subsequent to the code meeting to provide for that loading space in front of the building. That addresses the concern of the fire, of the police department. The remaining concern that they have is the general concern about lack of parking, which remains, because, you know, as articulated at the hearing, they share the general concern that 27 spaces is not going to be adequate, and that's, you know, to the extent that there's really nothing that can be modified about at this point.
So, can I make a comment about the code review?
Yeah, yeah, please.
The code review is an informal concept review process, and questions to be, this is my understanding, questions can be raised. I'm not sure if they reviewed final plans. It was done October 22, 2019, and many of the issues probably were addressed at the public hearing. But I don't feel that the specific questions that were raised at that time by fire and police were addressed in detail by the two safety institutions that we rely on. So I would prefer not to have to render a decision until I feel fully informed with a detailed report by our safety experts in our town. I will be voting to deny this based on information.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Went, just for the benefit of the other commissioners, what's the date on the fire department's email chain there?
Stand mine.
I just don't have that in front of me. I remember, I just don't have it in my fingertips.
It was subsequent to the hearing.
Subsequent to the public hearing.
It was June 11, I think.
June 11, 2020.
Yeah.
It was, it was in follow-up to the, to the hearing. There was some dialogue during the hearing from Attorney Fallon, representing that he had subsequent meetings with the fire department, subsequent to the code meeting, and recommended that we, through staff, confirm that, which we did, which resulted in the chief's email.
Right. That was my recollection, and thank you for clarifying that. So, you know, Commissioner Braun, I absolutely appreciate your concerns. In this instance, you know, we did ask for it, and we got it. We even questioned the power line issue, and the fire chief made it clear that their approval was not premised upon relocation, but that was a desirable result, and we will do our best to ask for that to happen from the utilities when this parcel is developed, you know, when they've got the construction equipment out there. Seems like that is of a great benefit to not just safety, but also, you know, visually the town, power outages and inclement weather and so forth. So, anyway, I thought that would be important to just clarify.
If I may, perhaps we should clarify the language of the condition of, of the condition of approval, of seeking permission to relocate the utility lines, incorporate some aspect of best efforts, you know, you know.
Well.
There, there's some, so that there's some measurable standard that the applicant has to meet in terms of seeking the approval of United Illuminating.
That's a fair, fair point. I mean, I think that the, the, the real teeth on that is going to be the request from the fire department and the request from the Town Plan and Zoning Department and the applicant, all asking the utility, you know, to do this. But it's a fair, fair point to build into the condition of approval that the applicant use best efforts. I, this is, you also should bear in mind that these are aspirational, if you will, given the nature of the application under Section 830G.
Not sure how enforceable they really are.
It's not. Well, just by way of background, this same applicant, as you know, is building the project on the corner of Ruane and Post Road, and they, without the commission's urging, on their own sought to relocate the power lines on Ruane Street there in front of that project, and were, and were thwarted by the utility company. Now, we didn't join them in that effort. It wasn't part of the application, but, you know, so it would be a nice thing to have. If the chief has made clear it's not required, we can all engage with the utility companies to offer our support to the applicant in seeking that relocation. But at the end of the day, if, if they can't, if the utility company refuses to authorize that, then I think that's where it would lie. But I, you know, the applicant has, has represented to, to us that they are not opposed to that. As a matter of fact, you know, certainly support the idea of seeking relocation of those power lines.
Right.
But, but Mr. Berman's point is well-taken. We can tweak that language. It says, "seek approval," you know, demonstrate best effort to seek approval, or along those lines to, you know, to bolster that. But I understand what you're saying.
Did you say the height is 65 feet?
The rooftop, the height to the deck is 63 feet.
So this is our new highest building. Sherman Street and Ruane are 52, and now this is 63.
No, Sherman Street, if you're, the existing Sherman Street is 60 feet. That's a five-story building.
Oh, okay. So it's the same as that. It's very, and then what's our criteria for parking for 48 bedrooms?
Well, our current regulation is not, it depends on which zone you're in. In a, in our district, it's lesser of 1-point space per unit, 1-point, I'm sorry, 1.25 spaces per unit or 1 per bedroom, the less of. So it's, it's pretty close to that. It doesn't meet their standards on a standard design residence district site, but the bottom line is our regulations really aren't, don't apply here. It's whether or not the results, you know, the develop, the developer, the development will or will not result in a demonstratable public health and safety concern.
Your 48 bedrooms, 26 isn't very close to it. Isn't it the TOD zone anyway, isn't it?
It is. Well, it's a Center Design District.
Really lacking parking, I think. I don't know. Of course, some of those residents could apply for commuter parking permits. They're only $400 a year. I suppose we can't require the developers to do it.
No.
It's really lacking parking.
Are there other commissioners with questions or comments, discussions? Hearing no other comments or questions, are we ready to take a vote on this?
Steve, I don't think your microphone's working.
Hang on, let me make sure I don't have it muted.
No, you don't. It's the second time I think I saw him try and chime in.
He's not muted on my end.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levy, I was wondering what happened.
Turns out I had my dictating equipment still plugged in, so it was going through there, rather, my microphone.
You have a nice transcript of all of your illustrious words of wisdom.
Yeah, so I guess you missed my comments in the executive session?
No.
No, that was my phone, actually.
Yeah.
Just a clarification on the power line. As I understand that the developer would have to use his best efforts to have the lines moved, we would join in that effort, but ultimately, if the utilities use, that would not be a basis for denying this application. One other question, did the developer indicate a willingness to pay for moving the lines, or is that not been addressed?
No, it would be at the developer's expense.
Yeah. So they just need permission. We, we approved it in the context of this plan. The fire department is advocating for that in terms of ease of access and safety, and the developer is approaching the utility to pay for the construction. So, you know, you wonder why it wouldn't happen, but with utility lines above ground, all around it, I guess they're concerned that it just creates a, you know, mismatch. I don't know the reason why they told them they couldn't do it in Ruane, maybe because the setbacks, you know, the building is just so close to the setbacks. But, you know, who knows?
So we can, just to recap that, as you've been talking, so we can phrase that to say that the applicant shall demonstrate the best effort to relocate that underground utility line. The staff will join with the applicant to support that effort, along with the fire department, to improve ladder access. I like that.
I think it was Tom, Commissioner Noonan, your motion, you approved the amendment?
I do.
Okay, and the second there was Commissioner Corcoran, right?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. The motion is to approve with conditions, as stated. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
I have one opposed, Commissioner Braun. Any abstentions? Okay. So the application is approved 6 to 1. All right. The next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda. Is our public hearing. The zoning regulation amendment, the application of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission to amend Section 2.12 flood management and 32.0 flood protection of the Fairfield zoning regulation. Purpose of the amendment is to update the regulations pursuant to the standards of the National Flood Insurance Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the proceeding over to Emmeline Harrigan, our Assistant Planning Director.
Harrigan.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to also begin to share my screen real quick. I'm just going to do a very quick presentation just to kind of explain some of the concepts in the flood regulations. I think we do have on the call a couple of folks who live in the flood zone, and if you live in the flood zone, the flood, existing flood regulations become second nature. But for those of you who do not, there may be some things that I think required a little bit of explanation, so that's just what I'm going to provide here. Can everybody, oops, sorry.
Yeah, can?
Can everybody see the screen?
Yeah, yeah, good.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. So there were a couple of reasons, so I'm just going to back up a little bit and give a little bit of history as to the impetus for the flood regulations. These have actually been percolating for quite some time. We were notified in, late in 2017, that there were going to be revisions to the building code that were going to take effect in 2018, that, you know, it was probably a good idea in order for our regulations that, for properties in the flood zone and for flood zone construction to be consistent with the building code. What ended up happening is we just, we ended up reviewing our regulations. We ended up being delayed in terms of bringing those proposed regulations before the board. And in that time, you know, the building code changes took effect in 2018, some of which included, based on the slide that you can see in front of you, the inclusion of what's called the limit of moderate wave action or the limo. When our coastal maps were adopted in 2013, these were, this was a concept that was introduced based on the flood modeling that was conducted by FEMA's contract engineers at the time. And essentially, what the limit of moderate wave action is, is if you can see the diagram that shows the VE zone, which is commonly referred to as the high-velocity wave zone, when you have a coastal storm and those waves are coming offshore, the VE zone is defined by a wave height taller than three feet as it comes up the shoreline and then comes onto shore itself. Oftentimes, before the maps were adopted in 2013, the VE would transition directly into an AE flood zone, which is commonly referred to as a stillwater flood zone, where there's not very much water movement, but there's depth of water. So the potential for structural damage is a bit different. What the new modeling recognized is there's actually this in-between zone, which the engineers refer to as the coastal AE zone or the limit of moderate wave action zone, where a wave height could be between three and one and a half feet and where the potential for structural damage was still more significant than a standard stillwater AE flood zone. So our proposed zoning regulations introduce this new term and this new coastal AE flood zone within our regulations, in part because even though the flood height might be lower, what FEMA strongly recommends is that within the coastal AE zone, building design mirror the high-velocity flood zone, which is, you know, kind of that house that you can see closest to the water in the diagram, where the construction is on piers, piles, or columns. Even in the AE flood zone, if you drive around Fairfield Beach Road, you will oftentimes see that a lot of pier pile and column construction actually ends up in the AE flood zone, so most people can park below their structure. So we, you know, we're kind of fortunate that I think just by, just by design choice, a lot of people are building piers, piles, and columns, which would give them further protection anyway. The other thing, and I just wanted to kind of provide a couple of examples for where you could find the limit of moderate wave action. What happened in Fairfield when the new maps, the new coastal maps were adopted in 2013 is towns could decide whether they wanted to add the limo to their actual flood maps. So unfortunately, for FEMA's flood maps, or for Fairfield's flood maps, you won't actually see the limit of moderate wave action line on our maps, even though we are within the building code presently. And hopefully, if you adopt this proposed zoning regulation, this is something that now is a regulatory status that you have to design to in terms of, again, meeting the pier pile and column construction type for areas that are coastal AE or limit of moderate wave action areas. There are really kind of two primary areas where this occurs in Fairfield, the first of which is Southport Harbor, in the upper areas of Southport Harbor, just south of the Tide Mill building. And so that's an area where you can find it. And the two places where one should look for whether the property is located in the limo, and usually this is something that staff will look for anyway, it's not usually something that the homeowner's going to necessarily know where to look for that. But that's going to be, sorry about that, that's going to be either on the FEMA map service center site or on the Connecticut Institute for Resiliency and Climate Adaptation website that's hosted by Yukon. And I provided the website location at the top of the page there. The other area in Fairfield where that occurs is going to be along South Pine Creek and Pine Creek. The other major concept that's introduced through the regulations is the one-foot freeboard requirement. This is already included in the state building code that's been in effect since October 2018, but as Fairfield voluntarily participates in the community rating system program, that community rating system program right now actually gives us a Class 8 level, which gives our homeowners within the special flood hazard area 10% discount on their annual flood insurance premium rate. There is a new pending 2000, sorry, 2021 CRS manual that is now going to require that we adopt a freeboard requirement in our zoning regulations as well. So this is kind of what's really placed the impetus for us kind of moving on these right now. Our recertification period is February 1st of each year. So as of February 1st, 2021, we will need to have that one-foot freeboard requirement within our zoning regulations as well as within the building code that we also apply, which is already there. So what freeboard is, if you look at the diagram, there is the flood elevation that's provided by FEMA. And then when you provide an increment higher than that base flood elevation provided by FEMA, that's what's commonly referred to as a freeboard level. Some Connecticut municipalities have as much as a three-foot freeboard adopted within their regulations. I think those are mostly the eastern, a couple of eastern Connecticut municipalities, like I believe Groton might have that, as well as New London. You know, we, when we reviewed internally whether we felt like we should do more than one-foot freeboard, we did recognize that certain, there are certain areas within Fairfield's flood plains that are particularly low in topography relative to the height of the base flood elevation. So we, we kind of felt like more than a one-foot freeboard being applied to our regulations might be very challenging for some sites, given how low the topography is. I don't know, Jim, did you want to speak to that at all?
Well, I just, I would just add that that's a minimum, that a one-foot freeboard is the minimum requirement. If somebody wants to elevate to a higher standard than that, they can. And the flood insurance rates are based on the elevation of the first floor relative to the base flood elevation. So there may be advantages to a homeowner in elevating to a higher standard, but we didn't feel comfortable making that a mandatory minimum, that the one-foot covered it, and if they wanted to go above and beyond that, they still can do so.
The other thing that we're adding within the regulations is EverSource had provided us a guidance document, and I believe this was a few years ago in conjunction with just the increase in the flood height and things that they were observing out in the field. And so one of the things, when you elevate up your electric meter platform, as shown in the diagram, they were having a challenging time being able to provide their field crews access to those elevated meters. And so one of the things that they required was a three-by-three deck area, sometimes with stairs, sometimes with pull-down ladders, depending on what has kind of evolved over time. But these would end up after-the-fact considerations by homeowners designing elevated properties or newly constructed elevated homes in the flood plain. And so we wanted to kind of take this opportunity to make it clear to homeowners and their designers that the AC, both the electric meter platform is going to be a requirement, so please design that in a way that meets your setback requirements. And then also, AC and generator platforms also have to meet setback requirements. Oftentimes, these become, you know, towards the end of construction finalization afterthoughts, which unfortunately then we have to deal with, and our zoning board of appeals is not particularly amenable to variances to either one of those things. The other design feature that we were having problems with in the field was the location of gas meters. The gas company tentative, tends to not allow for gas meters to be elevated up higher because their argument is that that's a watertight system. So at minimum, what we wanted was the gas meters to be located not directly in the face of wave action, but behind some sort of pier to be protected from any kind of wave force or wave action. One-foot freeboard also applies to any utilities, and then we also felt strongly that within our flood zones, we didn't really want underground tanks to be allowed. The last kind of big feature of the proposed changes to the regulations address enclosures below base flood. Your base flood, again, is how high FEMA has anticipated that flooding will occur during a 100-year storm, which is a rate-of-rainfall condition, not a frequency condition. But what is allowed below the base flood is parking, storage, and access to the elevated portion of the building only, just those three things. What we felt was not expressed to homeowners clearly enough in the VE zone is anything over a 300-square-foot size of an enclosure in the VE zone leads to a higher flood insurance pricing. So we really wanted to include that in there because often, you know, sometimes these are spec homes that are done by contractors, and then, you know, kind of homeowners are kind of left paying not the cheapest flood insurance premium price in the VE zone, but, you know, it can be like, you know, $4,000 to $5,000 for a fully compliant structure because they have too much enclosure below base flood. The other thing, and the reason why we added it within our zoning regulations, was a limitation to no more than 300, no more than 299 square feet in the AE flood zone, which is, again, our stillwater flood zone. So if you visualize that, it's most of the area that's not Fairfield Beach Road. That's, you know, I know Commissioner Levy, for example, lives in the flood zone on, you know, within the AE flood zone. And what we found over time, what our staff has found over time, is when folks have these larger-than-just-minimally-required, you know, access to the building above, enclosure for a garage, if, as the enclosures get bigger, we have found that they morph into non-permitted spaces such as bathrooms, mudroom areas, family rooms, et cetera. So through conversation with our coastal planner and our zoning enforcement officer, the request was made to also request that the Plan and Zoning Commission look at whether we could also add a limitation in the AE flood zone for enclosures below base flood. Those were really the most significant changes. There were a couple of clarifications in the language to reflect, and I'll leave the slides up in case we want to refer to anything else, but there were also clarifications in the language to reflect some of those 2018 building code changes that were recommended by our state NFIP coordinator. These regulations were both referred to the, to MetroCog, our regional planning organization, and to our state NFIP coordinator, both who felt that the, MetroCog felt that there was no significant impact of our proposed relation changes, and our state NFIP coordinator felt that these were regulations that are still consistent with our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. So with that, you know, certainly let me know if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Yep.
Email we got from Becky Benell, she raised three changes she'd like to make to our proposed amendments. I don't know if you have that or not. I don't, it's way over my head.
Did you, did you want to read those? Did you want me to read those?
Well, I don't necessarily have to read it. The commission has it.
Okay.
Becky's on, will have an opportunity to be heard herself, but...
Oh, she might be able to speak here?
Yeah, but I will say, again, we welcome the comments that we got today. They came in a little bit late in the day, given what I was doing today, so I haven't had a chance to fully digest what has been offered. They will have an opportunity to comment, if she wished to, but I haven't had a chance to fully evaluate those comments. But when we sit together, we can, we'll have a better idea of what we think we can agree with in terms of incorporating into the draft or what we may not agree with, but I just don't have the answer to that.
Thank you. I really apologize. I have to leave right now to go to a closing, so I'm going to sign off, but I'll see you guys next time. Thanks. Sorry.
Thanks. All right, thank you, Emmeline. Members of the commission, questions for Harrigan or staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I guess. Emmeline, if you could just go over some of the regulations that are not required by the National Flood Insurance Program to be changed at this time. You know, obviously, if we need to change a regulation to match the federal minimum, we have to change that regulation. But I know there was certain regulations that were described in your excellent summary and Kim's excellent summary that were not matters of legal requirement, but that you thought would be prudent for us to change. And could you summarize the main categories of those so that I could focus on those? And I'm not asking to summarize every single regulation.
Okay. It's really three kind of, there's, I agree with you, there's kind of three things here. One is what is required to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The second of which is what is required for us to maintain our existing Class 8 status for continued participation in the community rating system, which is, you know, again, another voluntary program, but provides a 10% discount to our homeowners. And then lastly, what are those items that we as staff discussed and felt? These are changes that we have observed that we feel are necessary within the field. So the, what I would say is, we have to make no changes right now to be consistent with the NFIP. We're already consistent with the NFIP. Many of these changes were a requirement of our continued Class 8 participation in the community rating system, CRS system. So that includes, for example, the one-foot freeboard, the limit of moderate wave action area. So it's really those two primary things that are really a function of continued Class 8 participation in the community rating system. The slide that had the discussion about the utilities, that's really born out of a practical necessity of our correspondence with our utility company. of our correspondence with our utility companies. And then, also, what we found was problematic because it may be specified in technical guides how to design some of these to be FEMA-compliant, but it's not currently specifically outlined within our regulations per se. So, that's where that, the utility information was kind of married of reading our technical guides, having had issues with properties in the past, and wanting more clarification language within our standards. Lastly, the enclosure conversation was one that is born out of the technical guides, again, not specifically required. But we felt like there were a lot of, there were a lot of responses where our zoning enforcement officer and our coastal planner had frequently identified problem areas within the field. So, that last slide was really something where our staff felt very strongly that we are repeatedly experiencing problematic situations for completed houses. And they wanted to nip that in the bud through very clear language within our, within our design guidelines and standards. Unfortunately for us, when we do enforcement, it's a very lengthy, drawn-out process. So, if we could have the design guidance in the, you know, at the outset and set the expectation for homeowners within the floodplain, you know, I think that that's just a stronger way for us to move forward than having to kind of deal with problems on the back end. So, that's, that's really, I think that's really summarizes where we were coming from. I don't know, Jim, if you want to add something?
I have nothing to add from that explanation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Other members of the commission have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes. In the limited wave area, Emily, are you able to give us an estimate as to how high a building would have to be, let's say, in that South Pine Creek area above grade level?
So, the biggest design change that that, that that results in for the homeowner is, you know, if you are in a still-water flood zone, an AE flood zone, you have to meet a finished floor of whatever that elevation is. When you are, when you're in the coastal AE instead, it's exactly like the high-velocity flood zone, the VE flood zone, where you have to meet that design standard at the bottom of any horizontal framing. So, it ends up being realistically, probably a foot and a half difference plus the one-foot freeboard. So, it ends up being measured to the bottom of their framing instead of to the top of their finished floor. So, that's the practical design difference.
If I may, the other difference, other than the reference to where the elevation is measured, is that also the foundation below that has to be an open-column foundation rather than an enclosed foundation.
And in terms of the enclosures in the AE district, if we amend that regulation, would that be prospective with respect to future building permits as well as new construction?
Yes, it would not be retroactive.
Okay. But if anybody wants to pull a new permit in the AE area, if they have an existing enclosure in violation, would they have to eliminate that condition?
No, it would only impact them if they were seeking to make that enclosure larger.
I see.
Which, I don't know if Jim wants to speak to this as well, but we also have, this is not within the flood regulations, but it's within our story calculation. So, oftentimes, in the AE flood zone, so in the, you know, in the beach neighborhoods, you'll see houses that are already with piers, piles, and columns that are predominantly open work enclosed, meaning that they have slat work, or they have lattice that surrounds them. Or sometimes, they're, you know, a good portion completely open, and then they really just have an enclosure for getting up and into the house. And that's really born out of our story calculation. So, if it's fully enclosed, we will count that as an additional story, even though they can only have parking, storage, and access to the elevated level above. So, what homeowners have chosen to do is if that enclosed area below the house exceeds five feet in height, if they leave it more than 50% open, then we don't count it as a story against them. And they get to have, you know, those, the stories allowed within that zone within the height limit above the elevated level.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. I thought the summary was excellent. Thank you so much for the presentation. Also appreciated, just before we get into a public hearing, appreciated receiving specific comments from members of the public and including Redlaw, you know, with specific corrections and suggested, suggested changes to the specific language. So, that was very helpful. And so, unless anyone else has any other questions, Sarrigan, you're all finished. Mr. Wendt, we're all done. You are the applicants, so, and we are through you. Are we, are we concluded with the applicant's portion?
We are. What I'm going to recommend, Mr. Chairman, is I'm going to ask those that are still here with us, I'm going to unmute everybody, but if everybody could please mute themselves. And then, if you use the chat function at the bottom where that little speech bubble is, if you want to be heard, please just type your name in the chat. And the chairman, if you open the chat window, you will be able to see the list of folks who wish to be heard. So, I'm going to unmute everybody, and I'm going to ask everybody to please mute yourselves except for the chairman. And then, send it in the chat, if you, just your name, if you wish to be heard. So, let's see if I can do this correctly now, having said that.
You're asking members of the public to use the chat function to send me a private message or to send that to you?
No, 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 just to send it to all, just with their name that they want to be heard. We can kind of queue it up. So, let me just figure out how to.
Act one. And I would also conclude the act's portion. We're going to go into public comment now. I'd also like to thank the members of the public that are participating in this experiment that, you know, we're trying our best to, you know, the kinks in the system here. And so, thanks for joining, listening in, and waiting patiently for this opportunity. So, Ms. Benel, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, hopefully, please, welcome to our hearing.
Thank you, Sir Chairman. I think I unmuted myself correctly. Can you hear me?
We can, actually. Yes, very well.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Okay, I have three comments that I'd like to bring before the board. Specifically, the first one, and this was a written document that I had sent prior, but I will just read them out just briefly. First of all, I'd like to commend the staff. I think the regulations that they're proposing are all very smart. And I'm glad to see that they're looking after the Fairfield rating system and trying to keep us at an eight, which saves all of the residents with flood insurance money. So, I commend them on many of, many of the items that they're proposing now. I think they're prudent and well-thought-through. I just had three comments. One is in section 32-dash-dot-five, section F. It is my understanding that FEMA actually allows a different kind of foundation to also be used in these VE and coastal AE zones. That it, I think they're typically used for larger multi-unit buildings, but they can be used for single-family foundations. I pulled this from a FEMA limo and higher-construction standards fact sheet where there is, they certainly recommend these open pile, pile foundations. But there is a designed stem wall foundation, continuous wall foundation option that is also allowed in these sections, if I read that correctly. And I'd like that to be an option for Fairfield residents if they so choose. And this would only be if designed by a Connecticut-registered architect or engineer. But if they so choose, they could choose that type of foundation as an alternate. So, that is the first recommendation I'd like the commission to consider. The second recommendation I'd like the commission to consider is born out of one of the things that I've seen recently in a construction project right now on Fairfield Beach Road, where the final grade of a project that is undergoing construction is lower than the grade of adjacent properties, such that the adjacent property owners are now looking to litigate and sue this, this property who has been allowed to have a lower grade because their property is now going to erode, and it would be considered a taking. And I, I feel like this could be a bad habit to get into, and I wouldn't want to put the town of Fairfield at risk for also being named in such a suit. And I think it could be easily solved by just saying that the final grade of a project must be no lower than the ingoing grade prior to the start of the project to prevent flooding and erosion of adjacent properties. In my mind, there's no reason, when you're already worried about nuisance flooding, to take grades down in any property in a flood zone. If anything, and I know we're not allowed to take grades up, but certainly, we should not be encouraging or allowing homeowners to take them down. They should have to keep the ingoing grade the same as the final grade at the end of the project. So, that's a, I'd like to have that be written into the regulations if possible. And then, the third one, I think, is something for more discussion. I don't anticipate it being resolved today, or even, I don't even have a final wording recommendation. But again, it has to do with nuisance flooding and flooding along the Fairfield Beach Road area primarily. Just for background, for the commission, the town of Fairfield had, for several years, had a bulkhead guidance recommendation. It was originally 11 feet. Then, it was, at one point, reduced to eight feet. And then, when the NAV 88 was in effect, that actually meant that it was seven feet. But now, there is really no guidance at all that zoning provides to our Fairfield residents with their, by the town of Fairfield, with the result that we are seeing more and more nuisance flooding at these very high tides and high-water tide periods. What we are also seeing is that the state of Connecticut has approved that all state-funded projects build to 20 inches above sea level rise in all of the buildings that are funded by state funds. And so, I think that should be the guidance that Fairfield, the town of Fairfield, uses. And I'd like to reinstate our bulkhead height guidance that we had previously had and use that seven feet at NAV 88 plus the 20 inches as our minimum guidance for bulkhead heights along Pine Creek. And so, that would mean that the total bulkhead height would be eight feet, eight inches going forward. So, I realize that probably needs more discussion, but it's the recommendation to keep and mitigate nuisance flooding, particularly as we see sea level rise over the years. And that's, that's my recommendations and comments.
Excellent. Yes. Really appreciate. Are there other members of the public that wish to be heard in this?
Yeah, this is Dick Moch.
Yeah, very, I was, chat box closed there. I never thought I'd say that. Yes, please.
All right. So, I sent an annotated copy of these proposed regulation changes over to the board. And it was very late. It was late this afternoon. I apologize for that. I'll just read my preamble to that. The document contains comments on the proposed zoning regulation amendments. And by me, I'm Dick Moch, I live at 241 Colonial Drive, which is in the AE zone, flood zone. I am a member of the Town Flood and Ocean Control Board, but this is only my personal comments. What, what our board has done in the past is we have gotten together and discussed things and made a position statement, if you will, to planning and zoning. We did not have time to do that in this event because we learned of this very late. We actually just learned of this when the agenda came out last week. So, my first question is a point of clarification on the slides. Is that in order to have Emily maybe comment back on the slides, or are we just accepting comments, period?
Thank you. That's a good question. So, typically, the public comments are made, the applicant and the commission to know to the questions, and then has a rebuttal period where they take the mic and then hopefully respond to all of the questions that have been, they've compiled. Sometimes, members of the public have the same question and so forth, so.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll go about that one.
So, my, so my first comment there is with respect to the slide, I think it was the second slide that Emily put up. It had the still-water flood level, the base, what I would call the base flood elevation. And then, it had a line called, termed the ABFE, which is the line of the top of the wave action. It identified freeboard as the distance between the top of the ABFE, the lowest horizontal member. And that's contrary to what I previously believed in that freeboard was measured from the base flood elevation, which is the still-water elevation of the flood. So, that's one clarification I would understand. I did make a couple of comments, or some are important to me, and I think should be important to the commission, and others are just editing, pure editing in the tents and so forth. So, the first one is on 32-point-three-D. And the new language says, enclosed areas below the BFE within the AE zone area are limited to building access-only, cannot exceed 299 square feet in size, and shall be constructed in resistant materials, per technical bulletin two. So, my comment is, that is overkill for an AE zone. It is certainly reasonable in a coastal AE zone, which is covered in 32-point-five-point-C below. This limit on the size results in the majority of the structures on the grade footprint being open for any ne'er-do-well to easily see what is stored there. And then, I want to say the following is okay. Enclosures below one foot above the BFE can only be used for vehicle parking, building access, or limited storage, and are prohibited for use as living area. So, that's okay, but the previous new sentence, I disagree with the need for that. I also would point out that this article contradicts itself if you, if you adopt the changes as proposed. In the first new sentence, it said the areas are limited to building access only. And then, in the second new sentence, it says, used for vehicle parking, building access, or limited storage, and are prohibited for use as living area. So, those are, those are inconsistent. Well, that's one thing I would, I would like to see that change. And the other thing is this whole, this whole idea of fill, structural material. And this is 32-point, 32-point. Fine, D. No use of fill for structural support or building shall be permitted. And then, it adds, and that's, and that's fine. You should not use fill for structural support. But it adds, minor grading in the placement of minor quantities of non-compact fill shall be permitted for landscaping and drainage posed under and around buildings, and for support of parking slabs, pool decks, patios, and walkways installed at current grade. But it goes on to say, the fill must wash out from storm surge, thereby rendering the building free of obstruction prior to generating excessive loading, dripping effects, or wave deflection. And my comment is, this seems odd. Why would I design my patio or my pool deck's underpinning to wash away from storm surge? And is it a storm surge from a typical December nor'easter or from a category-two hurricane? I just think that whole, that wording needs reassessment. And that's, those are the, those are the major, major things. The other comment I would make is that Emily was saying about three focal points of these comments. The other thing that came out to me that we're trying to do here is get consistent between our zoning regulations and the current state building codes. And it does that introducing the freeboard idea. And it does that introducing the freeboard idea. And that's my comments.
Excellent, thank you, thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that wish to be heard? I don't see anyone in the line in the chat box. And I don't know that there are any other people in the meeting. There's a calling user. Okay. Hearing none, going once, going twice. All right, then I'll close the public hearing on this item and turn it back over to Saragin and Mr. Went for rebuttal. Maybe you can answer some of the questions that have been posed.
Yeah, I'll take a stab first and then Emmeline can clean up whatever damage I create by doing that. I just first want to address Ms. Bunnell's comments. I haven't had a chance to evaluate her first comment fully and will do so. And so I don't know whether I agree or disagree with that, but we can certainly dig into that a little bit more. I have an issue with the second one about an absolute prohibition about lowering a grade beyond the starting grade because there are examples of sites that have unauthorized structures to fill. We have an example of that where it had to be removed as a condition of demolition or reconstruction. So with an across-the-board prohibition, it would prevent cleaning up a situation like that. But I am mindful of the issue that she's raising and I will give that more thought. The third item is with respect to the bulkheads. The town at one point, just historically, there was a movement. You know, there were a number of property owners that wanted to have bulkheads on the creek side. And the thought was, if there's going to do that, there should be a consistent plan so that everybody's operating off the same plan. And at one time, the engineering department did provide and produce a unified drawing that, hey, here's the standard, if you're going to do it, use this standard. But I think there was an expectation that there was going to be town monetary assistance in that regard. And historically, only a certain number of homeowners were bulkheads. Having said all that, I don't disagree that there should be a unified standard, but I don't think that belongs in the zoning regulations. You know, that's an action through our Public Works and Engineering Department and through the Flood and Erosion Control Board to perhaps set the standard. The other thing I will say that bulkheads do require state permits. So the state can weigh in in terms of what those are. So while I don't disagree with the statement that's being made here, I just don't think that it belongs in the flood protection regulations within the zoning regulations. I don't disagree with the concept, but I don't think it's misplaced in the regulations. I don't have any direct comments yet on Mr. Mahusky's comments. I do appreciate them being submitted. I do, and subject to Emmeline's correction, I believe the clarifying question you ask is the freeboard is in fact measured from BFE, from whatever the referenced elevation is. Like in the VE zone, for example, the lowest horizontal structural member has to be at or above BFE, the base flood elevation, where the freeboard would put it one foot above that. So to the extent that that may have conflicted with that drawing, I think BFE is the design standard subject to correction from Emmeline, but I believe that is the case. But I do appreciate the red line comments and we will look into those when we discuss this with the commission report back, the issues that we find in agreement and those where we may disagree. I just haven't had a chance to evaluate that at this point.
Thanks, thank you very much. Saragin?
I would agree with Jim. My only concern with, and I will preface my comments by saying that I did have an opportunity to have a nice conversation with both Mr. Mahusky and Ms. Bunnell to discuss the regulations. And so I knew ahead of time what they were thinking and potentially what they were going to submit. And we don't oftentimes get people who read our regulations and want to comment. So it's very exciting to us that they do come from the perspective of being a homeowner down there and wanting to understand well the regulations, both that are there and the ones that we're proposing, to be able to advocate for better regulations. For the concrete slab, this was something that came up in terms of wanting an alternative available. My only caution, and I don't disagree, that having an alternative available would be good. My only concern is that FEMA Region 1 has come down very hard on us for residential foundations in the VE zone. So I would just want to make it very clear, if we're providing that alternative, exactly how strenuous it is. So whether we need to include other supportive language that indicates whatever that standard is that has to be met. Because again, I don't want it to be something where we're having a significant disagreement with a contractor about design. The other thing that I would feel much more strongly about is if this is an alternative that the board feels strongly about. I think that this is a significant enough change that I would feel more comfortable also sending it back through our state NFIP coordinator because I don't want to end up in trouble with FEMA on foundation designs that are really not intended for single-family homes. And sometimes the technical guides are not as clear on that. So I just want to eliminate hardship in moving forward in the future. I agree with Jim's comments on both removing the grade and the bulkhead. The only time where I've seen some sort of requirement within zoning regulation is if there is a thoroughly vetted planning effort, regulatory approval process that's conducted townwide or section wide, and then it's something that's an implementation requirement by ordinance for redevelopment of a parcel. Because I think absent those things, we would be subject to takings. You know, where it's not studied, it's ambivalent, I'm sorry, it's ambiguous. So I think extracting a requirement from a homeowner has to be a fully vetted situation. Otherwise, I think we end up legally jeopardizing ourselves with it not being clearly planned, evaluated, permitted, et cetera. As to, I think, the comments of Mr. Mahusky, I agree with Jim's clarification. The other thing about patios and decks washing away, if they're at grade, they're intended to. So FEMA is very clear in their VE technical design standards that what they care about is the foundation for the house is the strongest thing that stands when a big coastal storm happens. Everything else is unfortunately disposable based on what they have discovered doing forensic analysis post-storm, post-hurricane. And what they found is if you beef up those other items that potentially can crash into the foundation elements that support your house, you will lose your house. So for them, the design feature that takes precedent is the supporting features of the house in terms of that foundation because they want to make sure that houses are still standing. The rest of the stuff, whether it's a slab that is your garage slab in the high velocity zone, any kind of patios that you install that would otherwise meet our beach district requirements, all of those, if they wash away, that's just what happens. But the technical bulletins for free of obstruction are very clear. That's what they would prefer to happen than have larger pieces of any of those things continue to batter at a house foundation and make that house vulnerable instead. So those are the comments I have right now. Thank you so much for allowing me to comment.
Excellent, thank you very much. So that's all for rebuttal?
That's it.
All right, well, with that, I will close the public hearing on this item and adjourn the meeting. Very good, thank you everyone for.
Thank you all for your attendance.
Bye now.
Thank you, everyone.